20 board meeting to order and remind everyone to please mute your audio when you're not speaking. And please also state your name prior to making a comment or a motion or a second for a motion on an action item. And I thank you. I'll ask that each commissioner, please respond with a here when I call out his name. Commissioner Doan.
Here.
Commissioner Duggan.
Here.
Commissioner Sanders.
Here.
And Commissioner Schmidt. Not yet.
I apologize. I just got off the phone with him. He's trying to get in. Tim, if I could use this, Tim, could you please reach out to Commissioner Schmidt? And I myself or Catherine will send you his phone numbers. You can talk to him. He needs help getting in.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Bagnall, I am here. So let's go ahead and start with the reports by the chief executive officer and the management staff. Take it away, Tom.
Thank you, President Bagnall. So a couple of things, Portland crypto-spiridium results for the month of September 2020. The Portland Water Bureau reported no crypto-spiridium osis detections in water samples collected from the Bull Run headworks. Additional details may be found at www portland oregon.gov/water/cryptoresults. We, the second item we have is customer financial assistance update. To date, 41 customers have received approximately $21,050 in CARES bill relief. Staff worked diligently notifying individuals with account delinquencies about this important program. Customers who have been impacted by COVID-19 are encouraged to apply for financial assistance. Details are available on the district's website at www.tvwd.org/relief. Item three, customer information system vendor contract execution. I'm sure as many of you know, this is a big milestone. On October 15th, TVWD on behalf of project partners executed the customer information system vendor contract documents with Open International LLC. While the partners have already begun pre-implementation activities, Clean Water Services and TVWD now officially transitioned with Open towards the upcoming start of the CIS project. CIS project implementation phase. Many thanks to the efforts of the partners, contract negotiation team contributors, and commissioners for supporting this initiative. Item four, AMWA Virtual Executive Management Conference. On October 13th and 14th, I participated in the Association of Metropolitan Water Agencies, AMWA. 2020 Virtual Executive Management Conference. This was the first virtual conference that AMWA has held with very different format from years past. It consisted of two two-hour sessions held over two days. The first day focused on the importance of diversity. Speakers shared information about the various programs. They were implementing to improve awareness and create more inclusive working environments. For me, it was a confirmation of the diversity, equity, and inclusion DEI work we have embarked on at the district. And in breakout session, I was able to share with other utilities the things we have implemented at TVWD. This includes the DEI training, the facilitation of open discussions through small groups, book clubs that are reading and discussing books regarding racism and diversity, and the DISC training. All of that fit with the types of things many utilities are embracing and encouraging across the country. On day two, there were presentations on how the COVID events were impacting water utilities from across the country and how agencies are managing workforce and financial challenges. Again, helpful, but also gave me some new concepts and ideas I'll be looking into for customer assistance for low income. The fifth item, so we have a.
Just out of curiosity, before you move on from that one, were Greg DiLoreto and Mark Nudson involved in that AMWA presentation?
They were not, no.
I would have thought that'd be something both of them would be involved in, so.
Yeah, no.
Kind of a surprise.
They had, there was about 200 attendees in the virtual conference. And I was scrolling through everybody to see who was there and see who I knew. And I did not, I didn't see anyone that I was, that I knew from the West Coast, so I was kind of surprised. It was a good conference. The other item I wanted to bring up is regarding our November 3rd work session. So currently, we only have one topic scheduled for the work session, which is the WWSS update. I am suggesting, along with the rest of the staff, that we move this update to the November 18th board meeting and canceling the November 3rd work session. There is one impact by doing that. It's to Commissioner Duggan because I believe normally we try to set it up so that you get the WWSS update prior to the actual board meeting. So that's something to consider. And I was wondering if the board is interested in canceling that November 3rd work session. We're happy to work with Commissioner Duggan to give him an update before the actual WWSS board meeting. If that works, or we can go ahead and hold it.
How do board members feel about that? I'm fine with canceling it as long as Commissioner Duggan gets what he needs.
This is Jim Doan, works for me.
This is Jim Duggan. I'm fine with that. We had to do that this month anyway because of the way the dates fell. And how it was handled is I was able to review the packet. And if, and WWSS staff offered to meet with me if I had any questions or we could communicate by email. And fortunately, many of the things that were on the agenda were things that had already been in process. I didn't see anything that really concerned me greatly. So we didn't have to worry about that. And I was able to proceed feeling pretty confident going in the meeting that we would be able to handle everything. And it worked out fine. So I'm fine with that either way. I just appreciate staff's ability to react as needed. And we can have a follow-up at the November board meeting.
Okay, then with the board's permission, then I'll plan on canceling that November 3rd work session.
I didn't hear anything from Commissioner Sanders, so I assume that means you're okay?
Yeah, I was fine. I was just listening to what Commissioner Duggan had said, so I'm absolutely fine with that.
Cool. Okay, consider it canceled. We will have a day off in November.
Right. So one of the things, you know, we, as you know, I, when we schedule, I want to make sure I'm using the board's time effectively and efficiently. And when we just don't have much on the schedule, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to hold it for the sake of holding that for a simple update. If we had some really important business meeting, we'd certainly have, hold that meeting. So the last item here is the safety minute and department report. Hopefully, Tim is going to be available. Hopefully, he's, he might be helping Commissioner Schmidt. But Tim Bolin, our IT director, he will present the safety minute and department report this evening. Tim, are you ready?
I am. I am just multitasking a little bit. I'm asking Tomas to reach out to Commissioner Schmidt. He has an issue that I need some additional help with.
Great.
Okay, so let me. Let me turn on here so you can say hello. Okay, let's jump in. So I'm going to start today with a safety moment. And is everybody seeing the screen okay?
Yep, we see it.
Okay, great. Okay, we're going to start by talking a little bit tonight about your personal data being at risk. And especially during this time of COVID, we've had a massive increase in the number of cyber attacks and data theft attempts. We see that in the office on a daily basis. Our firewalls and our protection systems are intercepting and shutting down hundreds of attempts at attacks per day. Our Office 365 email filter is screening out dozens, if not more malicious files every day. And we've seen a massive increase starting in about April or May of this year, and it's continuing. So what I wanted to stress tonight is that hackers, cyber criminals, and in the age of stay-at-home schooling, poor teenagers want your data. And whether you like it or not, your information is stored across the globe. In addition to your personal computer, anybody you do business with, whether it's a local merchant or an online merchant or anybody you interact with online, has some of your data. That may be in the form of just a user ID and password. It may be personal data. It could be credit card information. It could be financial data, whole variety of things. The challenge is that you can't control where that data lives. But there are some steps you can take to try and protect yourself and to minimize the unauthorized access to that. So this will be pretty short and sweet. Number one, same thing you've heard from me a number of times before, use complex passwords. And when you do that, one of the things you can do to help yourself is use a password manager that allows you to get more complex without having to remember that complexity. I use LastPass in the office. There's applications like OnePass. There's a whole number of password managers. With the password manager, you need to remember one password. And then it does the hard work of remembering different passwords for all the applications you use. It takes a bit of time to set up, but it's well worth the effort. And it allows you to add a level of complexity that most people can't remember on their own. The second bullet there is to enable multi-factor authentication for any of your online accounts that will allow that. Multi-factor is where you type your user ID and your password, and then it says, hey, we're going to text you a code or we're going to text you a phrase or something that you need to get on a phone or via email to type back in. And it's that, that's that additional factor of authentication that adds complexity. Should somebody steal just your user ID or your password with that MSA, MFA option, unless they have access to your email account or your telephone, they're not going to be able to get in. So really, really strongly recommend you enable that where you can. Another one, which is pretty common sense, is to use antivirus or anti-malware software. It helps keep an eye on things. Sometimes we click on web links that appear to be reasonable, but maybe they're not. Periodically, we'll get an email that looks like it's from a reputable sender, but maybe it's not. That antivirus and anti-malware software really helps you protect against those things that slip through the cracks and may affect you. The last bullet in that common, in that column is the most common sense. You got to pay attention. Don't take anything for granted. Keep an eye on emails. Make sure that you're expecting messages with attachments. If you're not, don't open them. Look for help if you're seeing things that look odd or unexpected. If suddenly your computer does something really out of the ordinary and looks like it has a mind of its own and shuts down or displays things oddly, you can always take that step of unplugging it and disconnecting it to stop it in its tracks. And then on the right-hand side of the screen, there's a, there's a philosophy called the 3-2-1 rule. And what this speaks to is it's always a good idea to back up your key documentation. And the 3-2-1 stand for you need three copies of any of your important data. You need to store those on two different storage media places. And one of those should be offsite or in the cloud. So for example, if you had a spreadsheet with your personal financial information, you should have three archived copies of that. One on your computer, one on a flash drive, and one up in a cloud storage location. That would meet all the parameters of the 3-2-1 backup rule. I maintain some information about my kids and my family, and that's exactly the strategy I use. I have a local copy. I back it up periodically to a flash drive or a hard drive. And then I have a sync that pushes one up into the cloud. So if my computer dies, I still have access to two. If my flash drive dies, I've still got access to two copies. If for some reason I'm locked out of my cloud storage or there's an issue, I still have access to two. So it's a layered approach to protecting your data and your backup. And then it's also combined with a common sense approach to keeping an eye on who has your data and how you access it. Happy to answer any questions, and I'm always happy to preach more data security and safety topics.
Thank you, Tim. That was very helpful. So from Tom, from Tim to Tom, was there anything else for the CEO's report?
We have nothing else.
Okey dokey then. We will turn to Commissioner Communications and reports of meetings attended. And I'm not going to start with Commissioner Schmidt. I think we will instead go to Commissioner Doan for the first report.
Help if I turn the speaker on. Okay, let's see. I've lost that file somewhere in the dismal abyss. Joint Water Commission meeting, Barney, Joint Operating Commission. There was a meeting, because I'm the president of the water intake facilities, about what our goals and objectives were. And this meeting and the work session, and those were the meetings I, I've dropped one, but I can't think of what it is at the moment, but that's it.
Thank you. Turning to Commissioner Duggan, your report on meetings attended.
All right. On September 24th and 25th, the district registered me to attend the Oregon Board of Engineering Examiner Symposium. And it was a two-day webinar that allowed attendees to obtain 14 continuing education credits or professional development hours. And it was really nice to have it over two days because in the past, when they've had it in Salem, attendees would have to pick between two different tracks, two different seminar sessions. And so we were able to get double the, double the continuing education professional development hours. And I was able to attend some sessions that I normally wouldn't want to attend. And it was, was very nice. So I appreciate the district registering me for that. On October 1st, we had the WWSS board meeting and executive session. On the 6th, we had our TVWD board workshop and executive session where we got updates on the WWSS and the public information program. On the 7th of October, I attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium Board Meeting, which is our regular one-third of a year meeting, and we got some very interesting updates. It was the last meeting that Amanda Fritz, Portland Commissioner, is going to be able to attend. After the election, there'll be a new representative chosen or administrator for the Water Bureau. Not sure exactly who that will be. It was also Rex Axelrod's last meeting as well. He was the mayor of West Lynn and representative for the, oh, I always forget, the Three Rivers or Joint Water Commission down there in the West Lynn area. And it was his last meeting. We also got word that Wilsonville is rejoining the consortium after about four or five years of being gone. I think they realize that they could accomplish more with, with their money than trying to run a program that the consortium does very well. We also got an update that consortium staff were able to get $350,000 worth of advertising on air and ads on TriMet buses for an out-of-pocket expense for only $127,000. That would be in-kind donations and PSA donations by those, by the media, over-the-air television station and, and radio and the TriMet ads. We also got updates on the wildfire impacts of what has been going on in last month. And it was really interesting to hear all the different agencies that were directly affected by the wildfires and what they're planning to do to make sure that they're not having long-term effects from the damage that occurred in late August and in September. That pretty much wraps it up for the Regional Water Providers Consortium Board. On the 8th, we had our regular WWSS meeting where I will sign the documents with Fay Branton. On the 20th of October, yesterday evening, I attended the Washington County CCI meeting. That's the Committee for Citizen Involvement. And the reason I wanted to attend that meeting was that it was my first opportunity. And I think for many people, opportunities to meet virtually the new county administrator that was just hired this summer. Her name is Tanya Angie. She comes to us from the city of Boulder where she was assistant city administrator, our city manager. And then she also, prior to working for Boulder, she worked for Mankato, Minnesota. So she's trying to get her bearings at the county, and it looks like she has great plans for updating certain things at the county. Top on our list is getting the county's website to function better. And then tonight's meeting and executive meeting. That's my report for October. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. Gosh, what a tough time to start a new job, as several people here know. So turning to Commissioner Sanders, your report on meetings attended.
Yeah, on October 6th, we had our monthly work session, which we all attended. And then on the 13th, we had our semi-annual Willamette River Water Coalition meeting. And at the Water Coalition meeting, we again discussed some of the same issues that were brought up in our work session, including the thermal trading plan, which was shared with the other members of the Water Coalition, as well as the process that TVWD is continuing to go through with ODEQ with regards to reporting. And then I have tonight's meeting.
All right, thank you. And moving to my meetings attended. On the 24th of September, I had the Westside Economic Alliance meeting where we talked, they talked about the economic outlook for the state of Oregon. And one of the things that I found very surprising and encouraging is that our unemployment rate is considerably lower, even though it's awful, is considerably lower than what they were forecasting. So that's good news. On the 6th of October, we had our board work session where we talked about goals, got the WWSP update and an update on the CIS project. On the 9th of October, I had the Joint Water Commission and BRJOC meeting where we talked about wholesale water sales, emergency enter ties, IGA's, just a whole plethora of stuff. And on the 12th, I had my meeting with the CEO and the board vice president to do agenda planning. And of course, then tonight, the regular board meeting with district business. And I don't see that we yet have Commissioner Schmidt, so I'm guessing we need to skip his for now, unless somebody knows differently.
Yeah, so he's having, we're working with him to reset a password. He's having some challenges. So it may take still some time, so we might want to keep going.
Okey dokey. Do we have any topics to be raised by commissioners? And hearing none, we move swiftly to the public comment section. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the agenda and matters not on the agenda. Do we have any persons on the call who would like to comment? And when I hear the sounds of silence, I assume that means no. We continue moving along to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. So tonight, we have three items on the consent agenda. The first one is to approve the September 16th, 2020, regular meeting minutes. The second one is to approve the October 6th, 2020, work session minutes. And lastly, consider adopting Resolution 14-20, which is a resolution adding an eight-inch water line connection from Northwest Keene Eye Court to Northwest Cornelius Pass Road. And we want to add it to the capital project list for the Towahonton Valley Water District. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Todd Sanders. I move.
This is Jim Doan. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Sanders and a second from Commissioner Doan. So all those, oh, I can't do that. So Catherine, acting as district recorder, will you please call the role to provide a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
And I believe we don't have Commissioner Schmidt on the line quite yet.
Yes, yes, we do.
Oh, great. Commissioner Schmidt.
And I say yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Should we, should we pause for a moment and get Commissioner Schmidt to do his report of meetings attended before we launch into the meat of the agenda?
President Bagnall, if I, if I could, so when, when our IT staff was, was trying to help Commissioner Schmidt get logged in, we jumped over doing the actual IT update, the actual department update. But we forgot to do the IT update. Is it possible that we could go back to that?
We could go back to that, and then we could catch Commissioner Schmidt's meetings attended too. We're just, we'll just back up a little bit. It works.
So then if, if I could bring Tim Bolin, our IT director, back up here and, and ask him to, to jump in here.
Absolutely. We're, in the, in the world of programming, this is considered agile.
We're, in the world of programming, this is considered agile. So we'll jump through this really quickly. Is everybody seeing the front slide there?
I haven't seen it.
All right, so it's, I wanted to talk a little bit about, and Commissioner Schmidt would appreciate this graphic. We'd be doing some tech support during the meeting, but that's about it. So what I wanted to talk a little bit tonight is provide a brief update. It's been a while since I've come to the board and provided a little bit about what we're doing and where we're going, and some updates on things that I've discussed previously. So I wanted to talk just a little bit about where we are in our strategy and objectives, talk about a couple key projects that we're in the middle of or just have wrapped up, and then provide a little bit of a look forward to where we're headed. This is a slide that I brought back before we did the last budget process, and it talked a little bit about what IT strategic objectives for this biennium were. And what we're really focused on is driving maturity into the technology area, simplifying our technology stack, adding resiliency, and driving a higher level of customer focus. So along the lines of maturity, that's things like implementing more standards-based technology and process, making sure we have data-driven decision frameworks, managing our capacity, things of that nature. The simplification is really wrapped around the concept of streamlining and retiring our legacy technologies, talking about going with a commercial software and cloud-first strategy, trying to increase our automation so we can focus on more value-added work, and really standardizing across the board and eliminating so many of those little one-off technologies or items in our environment. And then resiliency is really comprised of two things. It's increasing our security footprint, and that's things like making sure that we have awareness of what's going on, that's monitoring, that's remediation, it's designing our systems to be security-centric, and it's planning for our ability to recover when there is an issue, whether it's a natural disaster or a cybersecurity issue. And then on the customer side, it's really making sure that we're working well with the departments and our customers to make sure we're providing the level of service everybody needs and giving folks the tools. That was timely that we put this together back in early 2019, heading into the biennium, because it just so happens these are the building blocks that allowed us to recover quickly when COVID hit. So having some of those streamlined technologies and some of those self-service tools allowed folks to step out of the office and continue to work effectively, and it was just a really great intersection of some strategic planning and preparation that just happened to line up really well with an unfortunate event. So I wanted to bring this slide back to the board. I came to the board on almost two years exactly. This is a slide from back on October 24th of 2018. And at that time, what I talked a little bit about is the fact that we want to go with a cloud-first and commercial software strategy. We're really focused on getting things that are supportable, that are resilient, and that we can scale either up or down depending on our needs. And at the time, we talked a little bit about the fact that we need really good network connections, we have to choose our vendors wisely, we have to have a really good security posture, and we have to virtualize more, so we're not dealing with servers and network gear, we're making that more of a virtual environment. And the combination of our virtualization strategy, our commercial strategy, and those focus areas allowed us to take action on a whole variety of pretty cool projects this past year, and I wanted to highlight a couple of those. So what I did is I took just a cherry-picked list of our 2020 key customer projects to show how we used those criteria of maturity, simplification, resiliency, and customer focus when we're looking at what projects to do and then how we've executed them. So we've talked earlier in the year about NeoGov for onboarding and hiring as well as performance evaluations. We spent a lot of time creating technology standards and processes that'll feed into the Willamette Supply Program. We're going to talk a little bit about some of our telecommunications upgrade. You've heard about the CIS system at length, and that embodies all of these topics. The meter sales application replacement is underway right now, and that's tied directly to our CIS project in the fact that the meter sales and provisioning application uses the same software as our utility billing system. So as we replace that, we're forced into looking to the future for what to do with meter sales. And then a couple other unique ones this year were we addressed a field mobility program, and I'll talk about that in a moment here, but it was really designed to try and increase productivity and simplicity for our folks who are doing the great day-to-day work out in the field. And then, of course, the COVID and remote work support, making some changes in our environment to really drive a customer and responsive IT support strategy there. So we're trying to walk the walk, we're trying to make sure that we have a really solid plan in place, and that each of our projects that we select and focus on really tie to those, and so we're trying to get the most bang out of each project buck that we spend. So going back to that need for more commercial and cloud-based services, one of the first things we recognized is that we have to have really solid connectivity in order to enable a whole variety of other technologies and applications. So when our legacy network, when I came through the door, everything we had at the district ran through a single point of failure. We had one primary internet circuit, and it was pretty constrained with capacity. And before I actually started with the district, I've actually got pictures on my desk where there was an incident in the neighborhood and somebody fired a gun, and it just so happened to hit that fiber optic line hanging off the telephone pole and took the district down for a period of time. And it's that kind of an issue, whether it's a random event, or a seismic event, or a failure on the telecom company, we can't allow these little one-off issues to bring us to our knees, especially when we're moving more of our services out to the cloud. So earlier this year, we completed a project where we added a second redundant connection from a different provider that comes onto the property from a different direction, so we're not at risk from, say, a backhoe, or a bulldozer, or an auto accident. And we also expanded our capacity. So now, we've moved from a single point of failure to highly resilient, and we've added all the capacity that we need for everything from CIS to more cloud services to some of the data transfers and applications we're eyeballing. And the team did just a fantastic job of researching some of the supporting technologies and getting that in place. The great news was we were able to implement this without actually having any downtime, and unless we had announced it to the district, nobody would have known we suddenly just doubled our capacity. And then, one of the really interesting and fun programs we implemented was a field mobility strategy, and the goal was to really improve the work experience for folks in the field. And we're calling it a program because it's comprised of all of these different projects. What we did is we went out and we contracted with AT&amp;T and moved our cellular services under the FirstNet banner, and FirstNet is a federal contract with AT&amp;T to provide really resilient cellular services for first responders and those supporting them. And we qualify because we're a public agency, and for example, we support fire, we support hospitals, we support emergency services, so we're eligible for this. And what this does is it comes with a federal service-level agreement where if the cellular network is impacted due to a natural disaster or some kind of a malicious event, AT&amp;T is required by law to get that network up and to provide the district priority access to it. And what you'll see in the shot I have is one of their FirstNet trucks, so if there is a, say, an earthquake, what they'll do is they'll roll one of these trucks into an area, have a satellite uplink, and restore cellular communications for FirstNet customers. And what we believe is that this will add a level of resiliency and reliability that are not available were we not in this position in supporting first response. On top of that, once we had that in place, we started procuring some mobile devices, primarily iPhones and iPads for field staff. We completed a round of upgrades on our radio system, so now folks in the field have full access to a radio network, full access to a cellular network, and the devices to get to the applications and data they need in real time. On top of those building blocks of connectivity and platform, we then went out and we procured CityWorks Mobile. CityWorks is our CMMS application for executing work orders, for doing inspections, for getting access to our mapping technology, and what we had done in the past is we required folks to have a laptop with them, which was really clunky and challenging to use. We needed it more quick, we needed it more streamlined, so by going with CityWorks Mobile, folks can work on an iPhone, an iPad, a laptop, or in the office in a desktop. It gives us the flexibility and freedom to get the work done in a much more efficient process. So after going through those steps, that gives us connectivity, it gives us a device platform, and it gives us an application. Then we went to work taking a look at what work processes can we really build on. So Don Welton, who's our business analyst, worked with folks in the field, went out and shadowed them, got a really good handle on some of their work processes, and we identified flushing, inspections of both hydrants and meters, water quality sampling and pipe assessments as places where these technologies really made life easier for the crews. So for example, water quality, what we needed was we needed a quick strategy to go out and start taking weekly sampling at 152 stations. So we built out, and I say we, like I participated, the team did a fantastic job of building out a new collection template that uses CityWorks Mobile, and data now is updated in real time and becomes available for reporting, or transferring, or analytics. So what you see on the screen here is on the left, they can go and use the map on their phone and choose a sampling station, and it takes them into the middle screen there, which is a really simplified click, 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 just enter the observations, and then on that third screen, it's yes or no criteria, and at the end of these two screens, they've got a full data collection for a sampling station. And it literally takes seconds to execute a data entry where previously, many of these processes were executed based on paper, and they would come back to the office and type them in. So this was a turnaround of a little over a week to go from concept to testing in the field, and then it's been in production for a while, and we couldn't have done it without these enabling technologies. Same thing for our inspection process. These were also often done on paperwork, or paper in the field, folks would bring that paper back, they would sit down at a desk and type everything into CityWorks at the end of the day. So Don really mapped out the work process, then we used CityWorks Mobile to really get good about what's the minimum amount of data we need, what do the screens need to look like, and how quick can we make this process? And what I included in the screenshot here is a sample of the training documentation for the field crew folks, and as you'll see, it's really only a four-step process to do an entire inspection. It's open it up, add the notes that they need to about the inspection, enter comments if they need to, and mark it as complete. And it can be done without having to open up a laptop, log in, connect to the network, any of that. It's pull out the phone, execute the work, gives us the opportunity to take pictures and annotate them if necessary, just really cuts down on both the time and complexity to do more work. So the field crew, the positive feedback we've had has just been great, and we're using the same kind of philosophy to drive to additional processes, things like the flushing, some other inspections, and things of that nature. So the last thing I wanted to touch base a little bit on is some of the challenges we're having with our current phone system. So we really got the connectivity and the field mobility dialed in with our strategy there. We're also seeing some similar impacts in the office with our phone system. We use an older Avaya phone system. Right now, it's got some limited upgrade options. If we choose to make those upgrade options, they break other functionality, so we would have to buy additional products to get that functionality back. Especially with COVID, customer service and some of the folks working from home have really struggled to engage their peers, their colleagues, and our customer base because some of the limits with how our current phone system is set up. It's operating out of our data center, it's a pretty traditional phone system where there's a server that feeds your handset, and that's what folks interact with. COVID has really driven a lot of impacts, specifically in our customer service group. So what's going on is we're really struggling to route our customer calls to customer service staff who are working from home, and do that in a way that does not drive extended wait times, or changes to menus, or lack of features. Our system was not designed to work outside the office. To make things work in this hybrid solution, what we had to do is we had to go procure additional voice services from Microsoft and forward on-premise phone calls to the Microsoft Cloud, at which point then we can get folks logging in and distributing the calls to people at home. It's really clunky, we don't have the metrics or reporting, we need to understand what's going on. We really struggled to provide Andrew in customer service, and Paul in finance, and Tom, information about why people were calling, what time of day they were calling. It became a very manual process because, A, customers struggled to get to us, and then B, we had no metrics about that contact and that connectivity. So what we're trying to do is accelerate a plan we've had in place now for some time. We plan to put a new phone system into the next biennium's budget, and we decided we would accelerate a plan to replace the current voice system with a cloud-based service right now. So the opportunities there are, once you move your phone platform from a data closet in your office to the cloud, it can be accessible from everywhere. You can get to it from home, you can get to it from the office, you can get to it from wherever you happen to be, and it gives you that flexible, skills-based call management that ultimately results in a better customer experience. Some of the great features with a new next-generation system ensure that employees actually have a more simple life. A lot of time, what it does is gives folks a single number where they have to, you know, just track one thing to answer, they don't have to answer a separate fax line, voice line, text, all that. And so what we're really looking to do is to select a platform and identify some features that'll allow us to, A, maintain a more flexible workforce, and B, improve the customer service. So where we are right now, and what I wanted to update the board a little bit on, is that we've completed a requirements process to understand what we need, we've identified some vendors, and we've started working towards a contracting process. If we can get aligned on the vendors and the contracts, that we would hope sometime in, probably in November at this point, to begin looking at what an implementation is. Once we pull the trigger, our hope is that we could get customer service up and running within about a month of signing a deal. within about a month of, of signing a deal. And that will be the next update once we, once we identify our direction and where we're headed. So just wanted to provide a board, a little bit of an update on that and am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Wow, thank you, Tim. You have had one challenging bunch of time since you started. And I congratulate you on your flexibility and, and all of the things you've put in place. Gosh, I'm, I'm, I, to be honest with you, I'm especially excited about some of the field operations mobile apps. That's a huge step forward and one that Field Ops has been asking for, for many, many years. So I'm delighted to see it coming to fruition.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're excited about it.
Bet so. Do we have questions or comments from board members?
Hi, Tim. This is Todd. Just wanted to congratulate you for doing an outstanding job. And you're really glad you've been on board the last couple of years because you've really brought TVWD forward to where we need to be as we address the ever-changing IT environment. So I hope you get a little bit of a big head from that because you deserve to have a little bit of a big head. But my question has to be, how can you look so good on camera? Would you got like a, a light? You know, a ring light underneath you there and the background is faded and how is that? That's, that's fantastic.
I, I, I haven't gotten out of the seat to turn on any lights in the room here, so it's gotten progressively darker.
It's these gel lenses, I can tell.
No, it's just the glow of the screen.
Are there other comments from board members? Well, again, thank you, Tim, very much. And continuing with our, with our movement back and forward through the agenda. Commissioner Schmidt, do you have your meetings, a report of meetings attended with you?
I can certainly just call it up here in no time at all. Just a second.
Cool.
It's right here on the sixth, October 6th, I attended the work session. And the purpose was the Willamette Water Supply System and the CIS was the updates. On the 12th, I attended a meeting with Tom and Bernice about the board meeting agenda and tonight's regular meeting.
Thank you. That's great. So we, and we already approved the consent agenda, so unless I miss my guess, where we are in this agenda is at the informational presentations. We have two informational presentations this evening. The first presentation is about the regional water supply overview and we get a staff report from Chief Engineer Carrie Pack.
Okay, good evening. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. And okay, does everybody see the
Yep, looks good.
All right, so echoing on some of the comments that the commissioners have already made, we absolutely totally appreciate all the work that, that Tim and his crew, especially Dawn, are doing for the CityWorks mobile app stuff has Commissioner Bagnell, you're spot on. Field crew have been asking for something mobile for a really long time and the advancements that have been made during the past six months even has just been leaps and bounds. So we, from the bottom of our hearts, we appreciate the work that the, that Tim and his crew are doing, so. So, okay, this is an informational system for the regional water supply overview. And as you all know, 2020 has been an exciting and challenging year for all of us. One of the largest fires in the recent memories. We're reminded once again how important the water supply is. And so tonight, I wanted to bring you a quick update on status of the region's readiness from the supply's perspective during these emergency situations. And really during, as the region grows, you know, where are we? How ready are we? Commissioner Duggan reported that he attended the Regional Water Supplier, Water Providers Consortium meeting last month. And at that meeting, Oak Lodge Water District was reporting out how they were interrupted with water production due to power outages caused by the wildfires. But because of the strategic nature and connection in the area that they were able to deliver water without losing, using their inner ties and without, you know, interruption to the water supply. So I'm going to give you a pretty high level overview of the region's water supply system tonight and then, you know, answer any questions that you might have. So let's start with some brief background. So this is what we're going to cover tonight. Brief background and descriptions of some major regional water supplies. And talk very briefly about how we're hoping to take the next step forward and take any questions that you might have. And I'm completely open to taking any questions during the presentation. So let me know if you have any. And I was telling Tom that I got like three screens open right now. So I have chat open. So if you're putting something in the chat box, I'm happy to read those as well. A brief look back. We've had a lot of studies led by the Portland Water Bureau and look at the regional water supply discussion started in the early 1990s with the very first, region's very first water supply plan being adopted in October of 1996 by 27 water providers throughout the region. The water supply plan was updated in 2004 and again in 2016. From the collaborative, collaborative and cooperative experience from the 1996, the Regional Water Supplier, Water Providers Consortium, we refer to those as a consortium, so I'm just going to call it the consortium, was formed in 1997. And their mission is to provide leadership in planning, management, stewardship, resiliency in drinking water in the Portland region. Current membership count is 26 agencies. And those agents, 24, if you include Wilsonville. And there, these 24 agencies provide drinking water to over 1.8 million people in the region. Coming straight off of 1996's success, the group went almost immediately into developing a trans, regional transmission and storage strategy discussions. So in 20, in July of 2000, the very first regional transmission and strategy, storage strategy was adopted by the consortium. A lot has changed, obviously during the past 20 years. But looking through the regional transmission and storage strategy report, most of the planning assumptions and guiding principles that were included in the 2000 study are still valid. And this document unfortunately hasn't been updated since 2000. But I feel like with the limited effort, this might be easily refreshed to reflect the changes to the region since 2000. History of the region's water supply planning can't go without the discussion of Birdwa, Bull Run Regional Drinking Water Agency. So just wanted to mention this because I know that some of you are much more knowledgeable than, than me, certainly. But it's my understanding that this supply plan and the, right after the supply plan and the transmission store, storage strategies were completed, there was a desire from a larger group to form a water agency for the region. Regardless of the original intent and desires, however, the Birdwa, yes. The lengthy discussion came to an abrupt stop, stop around 2005 after political changes in the city of Portland. And no such water agency was formed. And in fact, the current regional water supply agreements were negotiated around 2006. And I know that Paul and Clark have much more stored history with the Birdwa experience, but we have to kind of remember where we didn't go.
Oh, Birdwa took a lot out of a lot of us.
It did take, yes, it did take a lot of, a lot of energy, I understand, out of a lot of folks. And, you know, I believe in celebrating successes, but also believe in learning from the mistakes so that we don't necessarily repeat those, but, but move forward with them. So with the, so we're at today, not a lot of regional look has happened, other than just the routine updates to the regional supply system that we have. So looking at the region, this map is pretty small, especially if you have a tiny little screen like mine. But it does provide a pretty comprehensive look and overview of the region's water supply and the major transmission system. So if you have a really big screen, you can, I'm going to see if I can find my pointer here. You can see that, you know, we, we've added the major water storage sites on here. The purple that you see, Commissioner Don, can you see my green pointer? It's kind of moving around.
I'll thank you.
Okay. So the purple identifies the major water system treatment plant. So we have, we have Bull Run on the east side as well as the Columbia South Shore. I'm going to refer to that as the Bull Run Supply System. And then we've got the Joint Water Commission system that we are very familiar with. There's a Lake, Lake Oswego Plant is there, but it's really a group called Clackamas River Water Provider. That's the term that Commissioner Duggan, you were looking for when you were providing the report earlier this morning, this afternoon, evening. And then the, the latest one is the one that we're building, which is the Willamette Water Supply System. So I'm gonna go over these pretty quickly here in the next few slides. So really my main goal for the evening, tonight's presentation is just kind of go over where things are and what, how they're connected and what kind of things that we have to look forward to. Looking at the system only from the TVWD perspectives, because we are, after all, TVWD. This schematic kind of shows the, it shows how resilient, the resilient nature of our system. So we have JWC coming from the west. We have Bull Run System coming from the east. We have Willamette Water System coming from the south. These are all connected with major supply system, transmission system or soon will be. And we sit kind of in the center of all things that are happening, certainly in Washington County, but really for the region as well. And you'll see what I mean here in a little bit. Does anybody have a question at this point? Because I'm going to kind of go over the different water systems at this point. Okay. So starting with Joint Water Commission Water Supply. There's nothing new here on this slide for, for you all because you, you're very familiar with this system. The Joint Waters Commission is owned by cities of Forest Grove, Hillsborough, Beaverton and the Talton Valley Water District. Each partner has different ownership percentages for specific assets. The Barney Reservoir, which you see here on the lower side of the picture, is located in the Trask, Trask River Basin. It's about 16 miles west of Gaston. This reservoir is owned by the, the four partners, as I mentioned, cities of Hillsborough, Forest Grove, Beaverton, TVWD, as well as Clean Water Services. We have stored water rights of 1,300,500 acre foot in that basin, in that reservoir. And then the Hag Lake, which is just located just about 10 miles west of Gaston, is also owned by the Joint Water Commission minus the Clean Water, or Clean Water Services. Between the two reservoirs, between Skoggins Reservoir and the Barney Reservoir, the drinking water partners, not including Clean Water Services, have a combined total of 28,386 acre foot or about just shy of 8,000 million gallons of stored water for drinking water purpose. I should note that of, of all of the, the acre foot of storage, TVWD only has 5,789 acre foot of stored water. That's about 1,600 million gallons in the Barney Reservoir only. So we actually don't have any stored water rights in the Skoggins Reservoir. The picture you see on the top here is the newly expanded water treatment plant. The plant capacity was recently expanded to 85 million gallons a day. JWC's intake is located just north of the plant at the Spring Hill Pumping St. Plant. And the Spring Hill Pumping Plan is operated in conjunction with the Talton Valley Irrigation District. Joint Water Commission owns and operates two finished water reservoirs with the combined capacity gallons. Two main supply lines, the north transmission line of 80 million gallons a day capacity and the south transmission line of 25 million gallons of, a day of capacity are also owned and operated by Joint Water Commissioner, Commission. So I think the, the naming of these different facilities were done by non-engineers until it came to the, the transmissions lines themselves, which we just picked north and south. Did anybody have any question about the Joint Water Commission system? Okay. Moving on to the Portland Water System. Portland System has two water sources, the Bull Run River and the Columbia South Shore Well Field. The Bull Run Supply, including the conduits and the lusted treatment facilities, offer a capacity of 210 million gallons a day. The Columbia South Shore Well Field is typically accessed during the summertime only when we need the additional supply to meet the summer peaks, peak season needs. And it has capacity of about 90 million gallons a day. Most of the water that Talton Valley customers receive come through the Washington County Supply Line. That is gravity fed from the Powell Butte Reservoir. We receive small amount of water from Washington Park Reservoir, but it's compared to Washington County Supply Line is pretty minor and typically used in the upper or northeastern portion of our district. In addition to a, in addition, Portland is working, as you all know, on constructing a filtration plant, which is being designed and designed for construction right now. And it's expected to be online in 2027, I believe. The new plant, it will be located near the Lested Treatment Facility in Clackamas County. I think that's called Carpenter Lane Site, if I remember correctly. So I'm sure I left a bunch of things out of here, but does anybody have any questions about Portland Supply? Okay. So this is the, this slide represents the Clackamas Water Providers. It's a, this is the area that I'm actually least familiar with. Mostly because we don't receive any water from here and things, we aren't necessarily completely connected to this group of water system. What you see on this slide are figures included in the most recent regional water supply plan update in 2016. So some of them, when we were putting this slide together, there was a lot of questions as to how much capacity each of these facilities had. And, and I think th- these are the right numbers. Some of them are constructing some additional capacity at this point. But I believe these are the numbers that are being operated on right now. So what you might notice is that there are a lot of treatment plants and they're located pretty close to each other. The other thing that you might notice, well, you can't really see too well on this, but here's the city of Estacada and there's the Clackamas River coming down towards meeting up with the Willamette River at this point. So you've So you've got Estacada, which has a very tiny plant, two MGD. And then you have Clackamas River Water right there. North Clackamas County Commission, Water Commission, which is made up of Oak Lodge Water District and City of Gladstone. The South Fork Water Board, which is made up of Oregon City and West Lynn. And then the City of Lake Oswego and City of Tigard Plant here. So you've got one, two, three, four, five plants, all drawing from Clackamas River. So earlier this evening, Commissioner Duggan reported that he attended the Regional Water Provider Consortium Board Meeting. At that meeting, Carrie Duncan from City of Lake Oswego provided a brief Lessons Learned Presentation experienced during this year's devastating fire, wildfire season, which actually is still going. I thought the, the presentation was excellent. And if anybody's interested, they, you know, one of the benefits of these virtual meetings through COVID period is that all the meetings are recorded. So I have access to the recorded presentation from Carrie Duncan. So if anybody is interested, you can shoot me an email and I'll send you that, that recording. What, what I thought was really, really interesting is that during the fire, obviously water needs were, you know, utmost importance. And the, the water providers in the Clackamas Water System work together to provide water to neighboring cities. So what happened was that the Oak Lodge District and the, the South Fork, or I'm sorry, the North Clackamas County Water Commission were experiencing powered out, power outages and they were having difficulty producing water. So City of West Lynn started drawing from City of Lake Oswego Plant. They have a pump station that they are connected to LO Tigard System Plant. And by using water from City of Lake Oswego, they were able to offload their share of water from the North Clackamas County Water Commission and be, have that water be available to, to the South Fork and, or South Fork Water Board was able to offload City of West Lynn's portion of water to the North Clackamas County Water Commission. And, and I think all of that kind of plays to how important the inner ties are and how important planning for things that are not just the Cascadia events as, you know, we have been building our system to withstand a seismic event that's, that is going to happen at some point. But even, you know, small amounts of emergencies, or not small, but emergencies like wildfire or, or other source of unplanned events that take down facilities, as long as we're connected to each other and as long as we can identify how to move water around, we can help our neighbors and, and move the water around when the needs are the greatest. So any questions about this group of folks that I could probably not answer? Because I don't know too much about them as much as I like to. Okay, I see Commissioner Don is typing something maybe? Okay, and then I just have a couple more slides. And my presentation is going to be relatively short here. Willamette Water Supply System, you hear from Dave Kraska on a monthly basis. I cannot be more proud to be associated with this newest kit on the block. It is going to be not only the newest, but obviously the best. We all know about this system, so I'm not going to repeat the, the facts that are on the slide here. Other than to say that I believe this water system can be the catalyst for refreshing the regional transmission and storage strategy that I spoke about. So again, that study was completed in 2000 and we haven't done any real to see whether the strategy should be updated or how it should be updated. And I think the opportunity for more resilient and reliable system for the region are really only limited by our imagination to think big and think outside of our boundaries. Okay, Commissioner Deng mentioned, yes, I should mention that Nikki Iverson and Gabe Soler also gave excellent presentation at the consortium meeting. So back to the future.
Carrie, one of the things that I've found interesting about your talk so far is that the, the Clackamas and South Fork and, and that group that you don't know as much about, the one thing we do know about them is that they always seem to be at each other's throats. So it's really nice to hear that when the wildfire is hit and when it was important, they found a way to work together and cover each other. That's, that's pretty terrific.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, we, I, different parts of our brain kicks in gear when there's an emergency, I think. And I think, you know, the, the fire, the wildfire that we were seeing on TV and just the smoke and air quality that we were experiencing, I think really brought, brought it real close to a home. And, you know, we, I think there is a capacity for all of us to kind of put the pettiness aside and, and act as, you know, the true neighbors that we really are and can be. So I agree, they, they're, they are, Clackamas, I, being a resident of Clackamas County, I am only too familiar with the sometimes less than, I, I was going to call it dysfunctional, but less than functional view of the, the organization around here. So anyway, this, I got like two more slides here. So I just wanted to bring, bring back a discussion that, a couple of discussions that we've had on inner ties and how we're getting ready for what we're about to hit. So you've heard me talk about Bradley Corner for the past couple of months. And, and I feel like, you know, we're kind of already started on our journey to looking at how do we investigating and reinvesting into our region's resiliency. So with less than, I don't know if you saw that, my little, less than half a mile of pipe that is going to be MPE, we're able to, but the Meska Pipeline East, we'll be able to connect to the region's water system. So if I remember, so you remember what I just got through telling you about Clackamas County, Clackamas Water Providers right here? With this connection of the pipe that we're connecting, constructing as part of the Meska Pipeline East, we're now able to push water to, City of Tigard. We can push the Willamette Water System water, which is coming up this direction, coming up here and over this way. Right, so we can push that water down to City of Tigard. And in turn, City of Tigard will load their portion of Lake Oswego LO Tigard water, which can then be served, used to serve somebody else down in the Clackamas area. With this simple connection, we are now all of a sudden becoming, have, gaining access to either providing or receiving water from Clackamas River Water System. So these are, these are some strategic views that we're trying to take the next step in. And I just wanted to bring out how sometimes, you know, the stuff that we bring to you guys seems to be coming from the left field. And I just wanted to bring a bigger context to why Bradley Corner line, the line that we got from City of Portland, how important that was to providing additional connection throughout the region. Any questions? From the board or anybody else?
Thank you, Carrie. Questions from board members, comments?
Yeah, Carrie, this is Todd. Can I ask an old, I don't know the right, urban legend?
Okay.
An urban legend I heard when I moved to Oregon was that the city of Portland, or the citizens of City of Portland had voted to never allow the city to use Willamette River Water.
City of Portland?
Yes.
My understanding is, I don't know if that City of Portland actually voted to do that or not, but City of Twalton and City of Tigard do have that record there. I think, I think Twalton has it in their charter. Clark, do you know if Tigard has it in their charter or is that, I know they took a vote.
I should make myself visible. So both Tigard and Twalton have charter limitations that require a vote prior to use of the water. The language is a little different between each charter, but effectively it requires a vote before you, you use water.
Todd, this is Jim Don. There's been no vote, but at the time when all of this was going on in the late 90s, there was this myth that the Bull Run was a little fairy land and that though the water never needed treated and the Willamette was really garbage water. And so politically it was infeasible for the City of Portland to file on the, the Willamette. However, in the late 80s, I prevailed on Gene Seibel to file on 150 MGD in the name of the Twalton Valley Water District to, to earmark that for the City of Portland, should the political situation change. Unfortunately, the Water District gave that, that water right up for whatever reason. So there has been no vote, but I think if you were to put it to a vote, they wouldn't want that really awful Willamette River water. But now that the Bull Run's being filtered, that myth has kind of gone away.
Wait, uh, thank you.
Although I would have to question whether, I, I would think Portland people might still just say no to the Willamette because they don't need it. They got way too much water and when we go off their system, they're going to have way, way too much water.
And, and from, from the, the engineering and operations perspective, I, you know, we've been, we've been talking with our partners throughout the region for the emergency preparedness. When, you know, when you don't have wa- water to fight fire with, you really don't care what kind of water it is, as long as it's wet, I think, is what we're looking for, characteristics that we're looking for.
This is Jim Duggan. I just wanted to remind the board, hopefully the, the members that were been around for a while, that we also had an ordinance in place at TBWD that we would allow a vote to be taken before we connected to the Willamette System. However, that kind of faded away after our presumed water supply out of the Joint Water Commission and Hag Lake failed to materialize. And then we were forced to go to the Willamette along with Hillsborough to get our long-term needs met. We rescinded that ordinance, and I can't remember the exact date, but I, I think it was like 2012 or 2013 with, without a whimper from our community. Maybe Clark, you remember the, the exact date, but we, when we switched to the Willamette, we, we took that ordinance off the books at, at the Water District. And we didn't get very much of a blowback from our community.
Yeah, that's correct, Commissioner Duggan.
Thanks, everybody.
A little trip down memory lane. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
My gosh, I remember when I first went to work for TBWD, it was like years of bird war, all to no effect. So if there are no other questions for Chief Engineer Pack, we will move to our second informational presentation, and that's an update on the district's financial performance with a staff report from CFO Paul Matthews.
This is Jim Don again. Let me just talk about Bird War for a second. That was created in the City of Portland Water Bureau and unfortunately, they never bothered to check with the city council as to whether the city council was interested in this or not. And so a lot of work went into this and everybody thought it was a cool deal. But when they went to city council with it, the city council said, you what? And the city council was not interested in selling rights to the Bull Run. So it, it spent lots and lots, people spent lots and lots of money figuring out how to work this thing, but they forgot to get some sort of approval before they did it.
Well, other than Eric Stens.
That's why it died.
Exactly, and that is one of the big problems, in my opinion, with the commission form of government. Eric Sten was acting unilaterally and he didn't have one single other vote.
Eric Stens folly.
True that. So are we ready for Paul now? Looks like it, and we see your update on financial performance on the screen.
Excellent. Good evening, President Bagnall and Commissioners. First, the monthly apology for the torture I'm about to put you through. Need to apologize in advance because tonight's presentation is going to have some new material in here that is, is rather, I don't know how to describe it, but we're going to look at some trend data and I had to come up with a new metric so that you could, could see the trends. And it's going to be a little bit of a challenge, so it'll take a little time to go through it, but yet still try to get us done at a reasonable hour because we have some additional work after this meeting. With that, traditional presentation, I'm going to talk a little bit about the economic status and focus on households here in the region. And then I'll talk about TBWD's financial performance focusing on revenue collection and expenses. So looking at the unemployment rate, and I think we talked about this a little bit earlier. I think President Bagnall brought this up. We are seeing the unemployment rate decline. And in fact, here in Washington County, it's now at, as of August, the county data is only reported with a month lag. So the August data where we were at 6.7% unemployment in Washington County, which is considerably better than the state and metropolitan area. So we are keeping ahead of that and that, that's helpful for our households and the customers that we serve. The still high by historic standards, but frankly, we're below what it was at the peak during the, the so-called Great Recession or the financial crisis that happened 2008, '09. One of the interesting things that I wanted to present to you tonight is the FICO scores. And these are the credit scores that people have. It's the traditional way that individuals, households have their credit established. And we've seen an upward trend, as you can see, we've seen upward trend since the end of that Great Recession. But look at the last several months during the COVID environment, it has shot up from 708, which it was for these three reporting periods, all the way up to 711. And you might remember several months ago, I presented some information on the household savings rate similarly going up. And so we're seeing kind of an odd, unusual event where people are having, you know, in the midst of a recession, their, what I would describe as their balance sheet is improving. Their savings rates and their economic circumstances improving. And this is largely the result of, of transfer payments, unemployment insurance and the enhanced unemployment insurance benefits. So that's relatively good news for, for many of our customers that they are seeing their circumstances not as injured as badly as we've seen in past recessions. Shifting gears now, well, first let me ask any questions about that? Move right on. Shifting gears, what do we see in terms of our water deliveries? We are seeing, September was a relative good month, and we're showing September and October. Keep in mind, the numbers for October are very, are not complete yet. So those are still to be, to be reported, and you'll see those next month. But we are seeing the gap close, as you can see. But we are seeing the gap close uh as you can see from uh the presentation. Uh, we're not seeing that on the revenue side, though, and I'll get into that in more detail here. When we look at gallons per capita day, we are seeing a slight improvement. But again, uh, go ahead and turn on my laser pointer. Uh, again, uh, a slight improvement uh in the last few months. And uh we are interested in getting some feedback on the color of the laser pointer because we can change colors. So if the green is not appropriate color, please let me know, and I can change that out. One of the things that uh I wanted to do was to look at uh give some more trend data. What's happening at the customer class level? Where are our revenue shortfalls coming from? So as you know, I've been reporting that we are seeing a significant reduction in our our revenue. Some of it predated COVID, but some of it certainly has continued on since COVID. So I wanted to look at to both our our volume base uh revenue as well as our our fixed charge revenue. So the district's revenue comes really in two forms. Um, the volume-based revenue, which is based on our two-block rate structure, about seventy percent of our operating revenue comes from uh that source. Uh, we do have two blocks. About seventy percent of it are from uh residential customers. The combined single-family residential and multifamily residential class together comprises about seventy percent of our volume sales revenue. Commercial production and irrigation make up the remaining thirty percent of that revenue. Uh, the other major source of our operating revenue, I say operating room because I'm not including assist development charges in here, uh, is from uh the fixed charges. It's about sev- twenty-two percent of our annual revenue. The charges is very based on the size of the meter. Uh, single-family residential customers uh are about seventy-three percent of that. So just single family alone, not including the multifamily, seventy-three percent about that. Fire lines, which we uh don't sell much water to at all, about seventeen percent of those fixed monthly uh fixed charges. The other classes uh make up about uh ten percent. So a couple of things that keep in mind as we look at this, because we're gonna create a metric out of these two numbers. Uh, in the past several years, we've been increasing the fixed charges and the volume charges by the same percentage increase. So they've kept uh they've kept in lockstep with each other. As we've had withdrawals from Beaverton, we lost both the volume-based revenue and the fixed charge revenue as well. So uh those things have have moved together. Uh, on the fixed charge revenues, we've generally had about a hundred thousand dollars of favorable variance per month, meaning that the number of customers we have has not been below plan. Uh, it's not been below what we budgeted. The volume charges uh have been much more variable. There's one a down, there's been a downward trend. And of course, as I've reported to you in the past, our bi-monthly billing cycles introduces a lag into understanding consumption behavior, uh driven largely by the weather and then the revenue. Uh, and we also have unbalanced billing cycles uh in that we sort of have a tick-tock. August, uh, we don't bill as many customers uh in this, these various classes. September, we bill more. So there's this sort of a tick-tock every other month uh imbalance to our uh billing cycles. So I talked about the metric I'm I'm gonna propose here that we're using to look at this. And it may seem kind of a strange metric at first, but let me walk you through it. It's what we're doing is we're taking the volume-based revenue per dollar of fixed charges. Uh, because those fixed charges are relatively constant, and they scale based on uh growth within the district as well as withdrawals. By taking the amount of volume-based revenue that we generate per dollar of fixed charges, we get this nice trend data that lets us see what's happening over time. It reduces the impact of the seasonal variability because we're gonna be using the twelve-month uh average of that. And it addresses that challenge of the unbalanced billing, and it provides a meaningful uh trend data over time. So with that, uh, this is the information presented for all of our customer classes. Uh, the green class here is is the single-family residential class, purple, commercial, the red is multifamily, the blue is uh irrigation, and the black is the production, the large industrial customers. At this scale, nothing really seems to pop out as because, you know, basically, the production dominates that. So looking at it on a per-class basis, we'll start with the residential customers. The first view that we have is over a four-year period. And you can see that uh the trend has been downward over that four-year period. We did have a period uh of relatively high uh consumption. So what this is telling us is that for every dollar of fixed charges, we're earning somewhere between two dollars and sixty-five cents to low of two dollars and thirty cents uh on the volume side. So as our uh customers have reduced their consumption, we're seeing a loss in that uh in that revenue base. So what we may have had two sixty-five, we're now getting down close to the two dollars and thirty cents out of every dollar of of that charge revenue. And that is, again, driving our trends. But if we focus in a little bit more and just look at a two-month period, you can see that the trend is still pronounced as we look at it. But then let's focus in on the last twelve months. And so this comprises that COVID period. Uh, yeah, there is a slight downward trend, but to me, this doesn't yell that this is a COVID-related issue, uh, that this is more of that secular trend that we're seeing over that longer period of time and that there's nothing directly uh that I can see related to to COVID in this reduction. I'm gonna pause here for just a minute because I dumped a bunch of information on you by introducing a new metric and using, showing it over uh four different uh scales. But uh, do you have any questions about this or comments before I move on to the other customer classes?
Uh, Paul, this is Todd. I like this.
Uh, you know, I thought this might appeal to your analytical mind.
Yeah, I like this. I think this is a, this is doing um a great job.
Well, thank you. Um, and now let's look at the uh multifamily residential class. We see basically the same trend. And we also see during this period of time, uh, that same middle period that we saw for the single family, the same kind of information where, the same uh performance where we had a a higher sales period uh driven largely obviously by that weather period. And then if we focus in on just the past two years, uh similar, the downward trend continues a little bit more pronounced uh than the um than the uh single-family residential. Now, obviously, the dollar, the productivity of our fixed charge is much higher simply because we have a lot more volume sales that you send through those uh multifamily meters. If we look on that annual basis for the past uh for the past twelve months, a little bit more of a trend than what we saw in the single family. But again, I don't see in my mind where this screams COVID. Uh, we'll have to spend a little bit more time and see how that pencils out. This would be driven by uh more by vacancy rates and other factors, and we just aren't seeing that. So what is driving this secular trend? Is it uh uh smaller household sizes? Could be uh smaller in this case. Are we seeing uh uh smaller uh multifamily complexes? Not the great, the large ones, but more of an infill. We're maybe we're seeing uh five, eight, ten apartments as opposed to the much larger. That could be driving it as well. So uh moving on to the commercial class, and this one, I think we're seeing something a little bit different. But again, if we look over that uh four-year period, we have that great period that uh was, we were really rejoicing uh during that period of high revenue. Uh, and then as we step down through the two-year period, you still see that downward trend. But when you look at it in that one-year period, uh, we are seeing a a significant reduction. If you look here, just in that COVID period, I think we are seeing here uh the results of the impact that the uh uh that the uh shutdown has had on our our business customers. We are seeing a significant reduction in that productivity. So we're seeing something going from twelve and a quarter down below uh eleven dollars. Uh, so that's how much volume-based revenue we had per dollar of fixed charges. And that is a significant reduction that we're seeing there. Irrigation class, uh, we had that high period, and boy, it drops off here when we look over that uh that four-year period. Uh, overall, the trend isn't that much. I don't think a linear trend would actually be appropriate trend in this case, although that's what I use to be consistent. Uh, if we were trying to model this, we'd probably use a different kind of a trend. Uh, and we look uh during that uh two-year period, a much pronounced downward trend. And on annual period, again, uh, looking at this COVID period, we did not have a uh, I'm sorry, something seems to be beeping here. We did not have a uh a uh wet or cool summer this summer. So this is, again, contributing to our computers telling me to do something I'm not interested in doing. Are you able to see my screen right now?
Yep, you're still here.
Okay. Oh, I see what's going on. It's telling me to get ready for the executive session. My computer is warning me, so I'll pick up the speed here a little bit. Uh, and then when we look at production, this is the good news story that we have. The production class, it's good news in that their production is higher and the trend is upward. Uh, whether you're looking at the four-year period, two-year period, or the one-year period, I am uh concerned that it is slowing. Uh, but the other thing is frankly, this doesn't uh account for a huge amount of our of our revenue. So what did we learn from looking at September? What is our lessons learned here? Water sales in September twenty twenty were approximately a hundred and five percent of water sales in September twenty nineteen. Couple of things to keep in mind, twenty nineteen was a poor year, and we had a three-point-six percent rate increase in that. So we're still uh behind, although we're five hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars higher. We're one point one million dollars below budget. The commercial and uh irrigation classes are down. The single-family, multifamily residential seemed to have stabilized based on the information I just provided, and our production class remains strong. Uh, turning over to collections, uh, same information that I've been presenting to you before. Collections aren't a critical issue for us. I mean, we're working on them, but the revenue picture is dominating our, the impact on our financial performance more than the collections uh are. Uh, notwithstanding the fact that we are not uh shutting people off for non-payment. Uh, our average age of of account receivables, we look at the details behind this. Uh, we're at about four point six days, which is uh uh what we were um in the the prior month. Uh, and the definition of our days of sales outstanding, you've seen this before. That's the common metric that we use uh to see what's happening with our collections. Uh, it's tracking along uh just fine, and it's sensitive to the increase in uh water sales. So August and September have continued the trend of uh more DSL or day sales outstanding uh as compared to twenty nineteen. Uh, and you can see that we've gone from twenty-six point nine days to twenty-nine point four. Uh, this is not a great concern uh at this time. Uh, when you look at the number of customers, I talked about that tick-tock. You can kind of see it in the data here where April uh is different from May, uh but similar to June. And May is different from June, but similar to July. You kind of see that tick-tock as we go through time. Uh, but the number of customers that would qualify for being shut off, if we were shutting off customers, has increased uh to seventeen hundred fifty-six customers. And the total account receivable, and this is just the water portion that has increased from four hundred twenty-six thousand up to six hundred and ten thousand. I anticipate that to come down as we get more collections from these customers in the coming weeks. Uh, so when I report to you in in uh uh October, I'm hoping to see that number of customers and the total receivables reduced. Also, as uh CEO Hickman talked earlier in uh tonight's presentation, uh, the CEO report, we are, uh, we do have our Community Action. This is our customer assistance program that's being funded with CARES Act dollars uh from the county through Community Action. We are seeing an uptake in our customers that are able to qualify for that and to get through that application process. Uh, moving on to our uh ages of account receivables, uh, added one day. For those customers that are uh qualified as in the shut-off period, their receivable average went up by one day. So that's telling us that we are having some turnover in those customers, uh, and that's uh relatively good news. With that, I'll turn over to expenses. Uh, looking at direct, primarily our expenses, direct expenses, leave-related expenses, intangible expenses, bad debt expenses, customer emergency assistance fund. So real quickly, our direct expenses, I'll cover directly here in a bit. Our leave-related expenses, uh, we're able to qualify for that through a CARES Act grant from uh that we have with the county as well as our uh some of our direct expenses associated with that. And as we did our analysis on our bad debt expense, we're actually not taking an increase in our bad debt expense to fund our allowance for doubtful accounts uh for fiscal year twenty twenty. We'll have to see as fiscal year twenty twenty-one goes along how we end there, but that's uh relatively good news. And the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund is doing very well. We've got a lot of donations, contributions to that fund. And because we're working on the CARES Act through the Community Action, there's been relatively less of a draw on that fund in the past several months. Our overall operating expenses are uh below budget, we are remaining below budget. And again, uh, that's an important adjustment as we go through time. Uh, with that, uh, it kind of wraps up my presentation. Answering any questions that you might have? And uh and appreciate your time, patience, and attention.
Are there questions or comments from board members? So Paul, at some point, when you're doing all of these updates, there's that one slide that's got the, it's got the uh equation, and receivable is spelled wrong in it. And every time I see it, I think, I should tell Paul that. I never remember.
Oh, we were gonna get that one fixed, then. Uh, receivables misspelled. I'll get into that equation, get that one fixed. Thank you.
So I think I heard Commissioner Dohm having a comment.
Oh, I was, this is Jim Dohm. I was just going to say that that, you know, the analysis is reassuring to me that we know what we're doing and uh and it's, it's not as bad as I thought it might be. In fact, it looks pretty darn good to me, and so I appreciate you doing that for us, Paul.
Yeah, well, uh, let me just, uh, it, uh, as as some of my colleagues are probably tired of me saying, uh, it's it's pretty, pretty, uh, we we have a unique financial challenge uh because so much of our revenue is committed both to uh fund the uh capital, the capital expenditures that we have over time as well as to be leveraged for the debt. And so these revenues, lower than expected revenues, lower than planned revenues, are affecting the cash flow that we have for pay-go, which means it's putting greater pressure on us either to reduce our capital expenditures or to fund more with debt. On the, but when you turn around and say, I want to fund more with debt, the challenge there is that our leverage is reduced because our revenues are less. So imagine that you are um a married couple earning a hundred thousand dollars a year. You go to your mortgage broker and you say, what kind of a house can I buy? And they say, this is it. You say, well, let me save for five years so I can have a down payment for that house. And then you come back a month later, and you say, you know, my pay just got cut by ten percent. I only have ninety thousand. And the mortgage broker says, well, then you're, the amount that you can qualify for the loan is less. And oh, by the way, the amount you can save for your down payment is less. And so it hits you on both ends of that equation. And uh, so it's, it's presenting a real tough time for us because our capital expenditures, especially those associated with the Willamette, are are fixed. We don't have a lot of discretion on the timing or the amount of those things. So stay tuned. Uh, it will become a, uh, I'm afraid it will become a frustration for you as we address these revenue shortfalls and go through the financial planning budget process. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I'd rather do that now than uh than do it later.
Well, I appreciate that, but I I would tend to agree with Commissioner Dohm that I actually thought it was gonna be a lot more ugly than it is. And I'm glad you're tracking it as closely as you are.
Yeah, I I think once we present the the rate increases that are required to keep us whole, you uh you you may, you may be disappointed. I'm I'm, I want to prepare you for that outcome.
I I I feel the preparation happening.
Thank you.
And I'm worried about it.
Yeah, I just don't want to mislead anybody here.
Are there other comments or questions from board members?
Uh, this is Dick. Uh, the unemployment uh situation in Washington County, I think, is helping a lot. Uh, even, I mean, it is lower than the rest of the state or the country, uh, which doesn't hurt a dang thing when it comes to people having to pay their bills.
Yeah, we are fortunate to be in a, in an area where a lot of people have the flexibility to to work from home and are in businesses that are essential. So that's something to be thankful for, and the economy is coming back for them.
Okay. If there are no other questions from board members, we can go ahead and adjourn this meeting and have a five-minute break before the executive session needs to convene. So I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.